Number 10, 2024 Kingsport City Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting is now called to order. And right off the -- we have all kinds of recognitions tonight. I know you all didn't come just to hear all about the wonderful business things that are happening in KCS, and they are wonderful. But we have so many fantastic recognitions tonight, but we're going to start things off with a bang. I think Dr. Tru has a couple of folks that are going to get us started.
Thank you, Ms. Woods. We are really grateful for all of you to be here tonight and welcome you on this special evening. I'm going to invite one special guest to come up right now, Nori Barrett. Nori is going to join me. Is -- Nori, you are -- do I have this right? You are a second grader at Lincoln, correct?
Yes.
Lincoln Lion. So who was your teacher at Lincoln?
Ms. Armstrong.
Ms. Armstrong. So if I were to wander into Ms. Armstrong's room and see you in there, what would be the thing I would look at and say, oh, she really loves to do that at school? What is your favorite thing to do while you're at school?
Math.
Math? Very good. Well, we are excited you're here tonight. Obviously, you've got a lot of folks here in the audience that came just to see you do the pledge, right?
Right.
There you go. So we're going to do it together. The flag is right behind me, and I'm going to ask everyone if you would please stand. The flag is right there whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you so much, Nori. I love the way you spoke up and led us with the pledge, though. And that's not the last time you're going to see Nori tonight, so we'll see her again in just a little bit. Now is the time I'd like to ask for a motion to accept the agenda, which includes the consent agenda. Once the agenda is accepted, the board mutually agrees not to discuss any item of business or take any action that has not been accepted for the agenda. Is there a motion for approval?
Some.
And second?
Second.
Cast your votes. Okay, is that coming through for you all? I don't have it. Is it coming through for you? Were you able to vote? Okay. Let me try again here. Mine still hasn't come through. Let's try this. Okay, here we go. Okay, the votes have been cast, and that is unanimous approval. And so we will move on to our special recognition. We are so glad to have Gwen Widener with us tonight, who is the Dual Enrollment Coordinator for TCAT Elizabethan. And also with her is Steve Sweet, who is the Kingsport Site Coordinator. And they are here to give some special recognition for our CTE program from Dobbin's Bennett.
Good evening. On behalf of President Heath McMillan, VP Richard Church, VP Crystal Fink, and the entire leadership team at TCAT Elizabethan, we are excited to recognize the hard work of Kingsport City Schools in being the gold level dual enrollment partner for Fall 2024. Over 372 students at Dobbin's Bennett High School had the opportunity to have technical and career pathways available through our dual enrollment program at DB and our TCAT Kingsport campus. Dr. Bo Shaden, Mr. Nathan Bailey, and Ms. Tammy Wolf worked tirelessly with the phenomenal CTE staff at Dobbin's Bennett to create numerous college and career opportunities for their students. Congratulations and go Tribe.
And we would like to present -- So if we could have Dr. Shaden come up.
I'm sorry. Dr. Shaden.
Have Dr. Shaden come up and accept that.
Yes, please. I did say you're here.
Of course, he's on the back row. He likes no recognition whatsoever. We're going to embarrass him to death by pulling him up here. He is a rock star, and we're so thankful. And we -- and Dr. Shaden, you know we're going to get your picture. Yeah, he just loves all that extra attention. And I will say, the work that he and his staff, not just him, that they do provides so many opportunities for students. And I think we collectively as a board, our main goal is when every student walks across the stage, that graduation stage in J. Fred Johnson, we want every student to be prepared for their next steps. And those are different pathways. And Dr. Shaden and his team are really providing numerous pathways for those students, not just college, not just trade school, but all kinds of certifications. Some students are ready to go directly into the workforce. We want every single student ready, so they are working hard and getting it done. Thanks so much, Dr. Shaden. Let's give him another round of applause. And I think we are going to call Ms. Nori Barrett back up again, and Dr. Hampton has a special recognition for her.
You never know what to do with your hands, do you? Good choice. So each year, our school system recognizes students who submit art submissions to represent our annual Christmas card. And Ms. Nori, we're honored to recognize Nori because she submitted the winning art submission from all of our schools this year. So Lincoln -- or Nori is a second grader at Lincoln Elementary. As I said, we selected her the winning submission for the 2024 Kingsport City Schools Christmas Card. And Nori, is Ms. -- is your teacher here today? Was she able to be here? Okay, so her teacher is Ms. Liz Leighton. And Ms. Leighton, if you'd like to -- if you'd like to join Nori, we'd be happy to -- come Now she doesn't have to stand up there by herself. So Ms. Suzanne's honor, the principal, and Ms. Liz Leighton, who is the art teacher at Lincoln, assisted Nori, but Nori is the artist to be recognized tonight. And so in addition to recognizing her at the board meeting, we have a few gifts for The first is a set of those printed Christmas cards for her to distribute as she would like. So I will give you those. Those are for you. You might want to have this on her hold because I'm going to bring you something else. We also each year have the Christmas card submission framed so that our students will have those for many years to come, many Christmases to come. She'll always be able to look back at this and realize what her winning submission was like and that we recognized her as part of our school system tonight. So congratulations, Nori. Help me recognize her. Right over there with your principal, if you want to, okay? Congratulations to you.
Thank you. Nori, that is impressive artwork. I'm telling you, that is fantastic. Great job. I couldn't do that today. So fantastic. Fantastic. Again, congratulations, Nori. And now we will have Ms. Jamie Jackson, who is going to recognize the Kingsport City Schools 2025 Building Level Teachers of the Year.
Melissa, would it be easiest if they came up one at a time and I handed them? Okay, awesome. What an honor it is to get to recognize these amazing teachers. As a former teacher, I know just a tiny smidge of what these teachers have accomplished, and it is an absolute honor to be able to hand these awards out. We'll start with grades pre-K through four. Kristy Rowe from Palmer Center. I think I got to meet you recently. Thank you for all you do there. Katie Little from Adams Elementary. Carla Casey from Jackson Elementary. Stephanie Rebuck Cox from Jefferson Elementary. Addison Hale from Johnson Elementary. Emily Quillen from Kennedy Elementary. Sarah Owens from Lincoln Elementary. Rebecca Good from Roosevelt Elementary. And Carrie Logan Burton from Washington Elementary. Let's give these grades pre-K to four a big round. We're going to move on to our next grade levels, five through eight. Stephanie Kilgore from Sevier Middle School. Julie Potts from Sevier Middle School. Jessie McCormick from Sevier Middle School. Angie Hensley from Robinson Middle School. Heather Bishop from Robinson Middle School. Jennifer Corbin, Robinson Middle School. Thank you all for what you do for our middle school. Now, moving on to high school and above, we've got grades nine through 12, kicking it off with Cameron Phillips from Dobbin's Bennett. Jimmy Burleson, Dobbin's Bennett High School. Brandon Reed, Dobbin's Bennett. Olivia Guntrum, Dobbin's Bennett. Erin Gurley, Dobbin's Bennett. Basketball night, sorry. Holly Fane, Dobbin's Bennett. Katie Kimbrough, DB Excel. Sharona Memes, Cora Cox Academy. Let's give everybody just one more tremendous hand of applause. This is a great accomplishment, and I'm so proud to be a part of a system that recognizes our teachers, their accomplishments, and all they do for our students in the classroom.
You know you're getting old when some of the honorees, your kids went to school with them. So I'm so proud of all these teachers and the amazing work that they do every single day. We've said oftentimes, we have great facilities and we have great curriculum, but none of that matters without our educators. So thank you, thank you, thank you. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Philip Marshall, who will recognize our District Teachers of the Year.
It is my great honor to welcome these three, one of which I've had the privilege of knowing as a teacher for two of my kids. I hope it was a blessing to you as you were to them. So for grades pre-K through four, Ms. Addison Hale-Binton, please come forward. And by the way, this is for the district-level Teachers of the Year. Grades five through eight, Ms. Heather Bishop from Robinson. And grades nine through 12, we've got Katie Kimbrough from DB Excel.
Again, congratulations to these rock star educators. They were -- there's already an elite group, and these have really risen to the top. So we're so proud of all of them and their accomplishments and the difference that they're making in students' lives every single day. So thank you very much, ladies. Give them a round of applause. And now I'll turn it over to Mr. Todd Golden, who is going to recognize our T-VOS Level Five Schools in Kingsport City Schools.
Well, clearly, the accolades are a reflection directly of the work that we see that have been done by the educators and the administrators of the system. So it's no surprise when you hear something like the T-VOS score of Level Five, that Kingsport City Schools received a Level Five across the multiple measurements in the system-wide numeracy, system-wide science, system-wide social studies, system-wide literacy, numeracy, and the overall system-wide composite score. The T-VOS specifically measures a student's growth over year over year regarding -- regardless of whether the student is proficient on the state assessment. In calculating a T-VOS score, student's performance is compared relative to the performance of his or her peers who have produced similar or past assessments. A Level Five is the highest score that can be achieved. Specifically, we want to recognize eight sys -- or excuse me, eight schools who received an overall top composite score of a five. If those who are here to receive those could please approach the podium when I call the school. Jefferson Elementary School. And finally, Dobbin's Bennett. Let's give them one more round of applause.
I don't mind to fill the time with a few more accolades. First of all, it was just -- and we'll do a formal recognition of this, but we just found out Friday that we have yet another State of Tennessee Principal of the Year, and that's Dr. Kelly Harrell over there. She's being recognized, but we will do that formally, so congratulations to her. Also, I was asking Dr. Hampton, this is a record number of schools for us, and it's the most in any school district in East Tennessee. So this is an incredible amount of work. This is the fruit of the labor right there. That's the harvest. And you see them, but where the difference is really being made is with our kids, and that's why we're here. Dr. Fletcher was held up in a case. He's actually working tonight, and so I'm going to pinch-hit for him. And he had the honor, and now I have the honor, to recognize five KCS schools that have been named among Tennessee's best because they were announced as 2024 Reward Schools by the Tennessee Department of Education. And if you would just come on up when I call your school. Johnson Elementary. You're getting your steps in tonight, girl.
I love it.
And last but not least, Dobbin's Bennett High School. While y'all stand up there, get your picture, whatever, I'm going to read a little bit about what that really means. First of all, it's the most -- it's a record number of reward schools for our district. Each year, schools and districts are eligible for designations based on their overall performance across indicators that are essential to student success, including how they prepared students to be proficient, their achievement, accelerated student learning, growth, encouraged students to attend school regularly, so they're not chronically out of school, and prepared students for post-secondary success with things such as graduation rate and ready graduate, and also supported English learners acquiring language skills. Schools are recognized as a reward school when they demonstrate high levels of performance and/or improvement in performance by meeting objectives across performance indicators and student groups. And the reward school distinction places significant emphasis on performance and improvement across all indicators from the prior school year. Reward school status is a key designation under Tennessee's School Accountability System. Congratulations. Oh, shoot, there you are. Dang it. Well, I just stole your thunder, Dr. Fletcher. So it was an honor. It was an honor to be able to recognize them. And I think we can't let it go by without saying, this type of success doesn't just happen, and it kind of starts from the top down. So I just want to say a thank you to Dr. Hampton. He hates recognition also, but he is leading the pack, and everybody's rowing in the right direction, and the boat is really moving. Thank you so much for being our captain. Let's give him a round of applause. Okay. So now is the time, pre-approved members of the community may address the board regarding non-agenda items for a maximum of three minutes each unless otherwise stated by the board. In your remarks, you may not refer to students by name without permission from the parent or guardian. It's not the time to speak about personnel issues, as there are more appropriate ways in which these can be addressed. In order to speak on a topic not included on the agenda, you're asked to submit your request in writing to the superintendent of schools at least three business days prior to the scheduled date of the meeting. Tonight, we have with us, per previous approval, Kimberly Pendleton.
And her assistants.
And her assistants. Ms. Pendleton, yes, if you'll just come to the microphone, that way we want our listening audience to be able to hear you as well.
Hi, I want to thank the board for allowing me to speak. I'm Kimberly Pendleton. I was in an anesthesis for 35 years, retired, and this is my husband, David, and this is JB and Jackson. These are therapy dogs, and I want to thank the board for allowing me to speak, and I just want to run down a few of the things that JB's and Jackson's activities, past and present, have been. Mondays, we are in the Bible study at Washington School Senior Apartments. Tuesdays, we go to Science Hill High School now in the mornings, and we do Sullivan County Library Reading Program at 3:00. Wednesdays, we do St. Jude's Hospital and Nice Wonger Children's Hospital in Johnson City. Thursdays, we do Franklin Woods Hospital. Fridays, they have off work. Maybe I should go back to work. Barton Locum's on Fridays. We've also gone to the Johnson City Community Center to educate children on dog awareness, Colonial Heights Methodist Daycare, Steadman Hill Nursing Home, Preston Place Assisted Living 1 and 2, the Blake Assisted Living. We did first start out at Kingsport City Library, and we went to Holson Valley Hospital. We don't go there anymore. At Johnson City Medical Center, Woodbridge Mental Facility, the Crumley House, which is a TBI recovery, Milligan College, and ETSU, and the Bill Gatten Pharmacy School for testing stress release. And we also did TCAP Stress Release at John Adams. And they've been featured both on WJHL and WJCB. In fact, JB, they put a GoPro camera on him and said, "Live through the eyes of a therapy dog." And I was telling Dr. Hampton, they did make one mistake. They said I was a retired anesthesiologist. I said they missed it by a few zeros. But at a time when Tennessee was promoting dog therapy, I got a phone call that I was going to be dismissed. And we had been at JB, had been at John Adams for seven years. Jackson had only been there one year, because they have to be a year to take their test, and he just turned 30 in July. But we had zero incidents there. Apparently, nobody knew we were there. JB was even in the annual. We were at every kindergarten party. He would go up with his stage. We went to one kindergarten teacher's class, and she sent permission slips home to the parents to see if it was okay. And one incident, I can say, which I told Dr. Hampton, it's so important for kindergartners to have these therapy dogs. And we just went to the same class for seven years, but this one little boy did not want to come into school, and the policeman out there would end up having to drag him away from mom. So I made a deal. I said, he could hold the long end of the leash, and I'd hold the short. And I got there at 10 to 8, and he walked in and was perfect. He thought he was king. So -- but it was 100% volunteer service, and I'm requesting that you reconsider your stance on therapy dog programs and don't end up being one of the only school systems in our region that doesn't allow these proven programs that benefit the participants of all ages, but especially the kindergarten-age kids. And thank you for your time, but like I said, this morning, I was at Science Hill, and I'm like, where are my kindergartners? I don't understand some of these. And I guess just with being at Nice Wongers and St. Jude's, I've always worked with children. So -- but we were there for seven years, and we were unknown. We were the unknown mysteries, I guess. So that's about it. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pendleton, and to your assistants. Thank you for being here.
They always wear ties.
Well, they're very dapper. Very dapper. Now is the time when members of the audience are invited to comment on agenda items. It is not the time to speak about personnel issues, as there are more appropriate ways in which these can be addressed. If you are not sure how to do this, please ask a board member after the meeting. In your remarks, you may not refer to students by name without permission from the parent or guardian. If you would like to speak on a topic not included on the agenda, you're asked to submit your request in writing to the superintendent of schools at least three business days prior to the scheduled date of the meeting. If you would like to speak about an item included on the agenda for this meeting, it's requested that you first state your name and limit your remarks to a maximum of three minutes. Is there anyone who would like to speak on an agenda item? Okay, seeing none, we will move Okay, seeing none, we will move on. And so, our first item of business tonight is a, and I would just say, we can, I think most people have already dismissed. We'll take a short little recess here. If you would like to leave, please feel free. We're just going to head to the business portion of our meeting. But you are absolutely welcome to stay, but I know if you have things that you need to do, you certainly are welcome to be dismissed. Mr. Frye, thank you for being here. I think you have some information for us about budget amendment number three.
Thank you. Good evening. Yes, I have two or three items on this budget amendment for your consideration. The first is a, is just a simple transfer of funds. Our curriculum and instruction department would like to transfer some funds out of their instruction accounts into their support accounts. In their instructional supplies and materials, there were some expenses in this account that we covered with some of the S or carryover funds. So this money became available to spend elsewhere. Due to some reductions in Title I and Title II funding, they've asked to transfer some of these funds into some staff development accounts. This transfers for $30,000 out of their instructional supplies and materials into their staff development account and other supplies account. The second item that we have is for a locker room upgrade at Robinson Middle School. They have done some work there and would like to replace some lockers and replace flooring in, in the boys' and girls' locker rooms. They've had some fundraising efforts and some donations that have been received. I'll bring the donations for your acceptance along with the other list of donations at a later date. And they're going to use some of their internal accounts, athletic money and some of their school allocation. The total for this renovation is $47,957. And we'll be providing $7,957 from the system-wide account. So we're asking to increase our estimated revenue for local revenue by $35,900 and make a transfer from the superintendent's account of $7,957 into the Robinson Capital Outlay account in order to fund this project. The next item, the main item on this budget amendment is an appropriation from our unreserved fund balance. We're asking to appropriate $650,000 from our unreserved fund balance that will transfer into our general project fund to fund the initial phases for the design and construction of a new elementary school to be located in the Lynn Garden area. This, this $650,000 will fund the Phase 1 agreement with the architects to get us some schematic designs and get, and some cost estimates and to get this project going. I did wanted to update you on our fund balance. We started the year out with an unaudited amount in our fund balance of about $13.5 million. Since July 1st, we have funded a, an additional 4% cost of living increase for our employees and the, the purchase of the Synthetix system at a previous board meeting. Those two things totaled a little over $3.2 million. And then there were some, about $600,000 worth of purchase orders carried forward from the previous year. So with all these appropriations, including this $650,000, that'll bring the, the unreserved fund, fund balance down to $9,45,618, which is just a little over 9% of our, our total operating budget. So, in conjunction with that, we'd also are requesting to, that we establish within the general project fund, a, a new project for the construction of a new elementary To be, I termed this the Lynn Garden Elementary School Project. At some point in the future, we'll, we'll have a name for that school. But this will be to, to fund, as I said, the Phase 1 agreement with the architects to, to develop some schematic designs and cost estimates and, and get the ball rolling on this project. So those are basically the three items, a curriculum instruction transfer, appropriation for Robinson Middle School Locker Room Project, and an initial funding for the new elementary school in Lynn Garden. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if I can.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions or any items for discussion? Okay, so the recommended action is to approve budget amendment number three as presented by Mr. Frye. Is there a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the votes have been cast and it is unanimous approval. Motion passes. So, our next item for business is the approval of an agreement with Thompson &amp; Litton Preliminary Program Planning. That's Dr. True and Mr. Frye.
So, yes. We received qualifications from architects for the design of a new elementary school. These requests were opened back in August, on August the 14th. There were 10 responses received. There was an evaluation team made up of several members of the school system and two or three members from the City of Kingsport staff. We evaluated the, the initial proposals, the paper proposals that we've received in, and we selected the top three and brought those three firms in for in-person interviews. And as a result of that, the team selected Thompson &amp; Litton to design the new elementary school. They will work in conjunction with, teamed with Mosley Architects to, to design this school. They have presented us with a proposal to undergo a Phase 1 planning for this project. As I said, this will be developing some schematic designs. There will be interviews with school staff, with city staff, some public input to, to get, to get this project off the ground. There'll be, as I said, programming, schematic design, site survey, traffic impact study that, because there'll be some traffic concerns around the school, geotechnical surveying, environmental review. This, this school right now is planned to be located where the Lynn Garden Community Center is located. And so there has some environmental issues may be involved with that school, that, that old school. So the proposed fee for this Phase 1 is, is an amount not to exceed $644,000, $644,067. So we would recommend that you approve this, this initial agreement. You have, you have the listing of all the firms that were, that submitted proposals. You have the copy of the Thompson &amp; Litton proposal. I'll let Dr. Hampton, or Dr. True add anything else.
Just that, very, I think we're very pleased to receive so many inquiries to, to join with us in this project. And the three that, that Mr. Frye mentioned that came and did formal presentations to us, I think showed a lot of enthusiasm and thought about what that project could look like. It certainly was a rigorous process to get to the final three and then to consider, the team that considered the three to end up with, at our recommendation this evening with Thompson &amp; Litton, I think reflects their quality and their commitment to the project and partnering with us. We have certainly, over the last several years, some pretty extensive experience with Thompson &amp; Litton. Mr. Brian Alderson is with us this evening. He's been the project manager on multiple projects of ours over the last several years. I probably talk to him more than I talk to my wife on a day-to-day basis with all of the, the work, which speaks to his, I think, his receptiveness and his willingness to engage and respond and partner with us. The number of phone calls and emails, day and night, and his commitment to us and our work and really being passionate about representing us in these projects that we've worked on so far. You know, he was the architect for the dome, the pool renovation, HVAC renovations at, at some of our elementary schools. So I feel really good about that and continuing that work with Thompson &amp; Litton and what they have brought to the table with us in the past and look forward to this recommendation moving forward with him in the future.
Okay, any questions for Dr. True or Mr. Frye? And thank you, Mr. Alderson, for being here tonight as well. Okay, so the recommended action then is that Thompson &amp; Litton Architects would be identified as the architect of record and to enter into an agreement with Thompson &amp; Litton Architect for Phase 1 services to develop a schematic design, including supplemental services in the amount of six, not to exceed $644,067. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion.
And the second?
Second.
Okay, if you would cast your vote. The votes have been cast and it is unanimous approval. Thank you very much. And Mr. Alderson, we do look forward to working with Thompson &amp; Litton again. You all have done incredible work and that's, we'll, we'll be talking a little bit more about some of that work here in just a few minutes. So, thank you very much. Okay, now we will move on to committee reports. So is there anyone who has a committee report they would like to share?
I did meet with these, I guess the safety task force. I did not realize that we would be, we'd be giving reports on it, but we did review the Synthetix order that was going to be coming through hopefully when they're not on back order anymore. But maybe we'd like to see that in the next year, kind of come into the school system with people get trained. We also talked about, you know, just some district-wide safety issues. The police department were well represented. We also had some paramedics, just a good group of people to discuss the, the safety. There were a couple, you know, school situations brought up. I really liked the input of Kingsport Police Department. We are in good hands, the kids are safe. I felt, you know, my daughter was even safer walking out of that meeting, just knowing how much care that we have, having SROs at every school, and just the, the police presence and just their visibility at the front of the school buildings, things like that. Those, those types of things were discussed. A couple of things I can't divulge, but definitely a lot of care and concern and partnership with the Kingsport Police. And next time I give a report, I'll take more detailed notes.
Did we talk about Healthy Kingsport? Okay.
Yeah, I couldn't remember if we did or not. It was a while ago. We spoke, or Melissa and I actually both attended Healthy Kingsport. And if anyone, if you're unfamiliar with them, they've kind of been trying to figure out what they want to be when they grow up, because they've been around for a little bit and it used to be about steps and water bottles. And now they have actually moved into a space where, and that's not a bad thing, I'm not denigrating them, they do a wonderful job. But they, they've agreed through that meeting that if we could focus, if they could focus their attention a little bit more on oral health in the community, especially in the elementary schools. They said they've done numerous programs where they've given out toothbrushes, toothpaste, and they said that's one of the biggest interests with the kids. And so we, we agreed, we're like, "Could you, could you just focus on that?" Because we think oral health, obviously, you would know, leads to better outcomes, leads to a thousand better things in life. And there is a dearth of that, good quality of oral health in the area. So they agree to do that. We're, we plan on meeting with them again, just kind of collaborate. But they're doing wonderful, wonderful work with scant number of resources. I would encourage everyone to please donate to them. If you have extra money that you're looking for a, a home to deposit that in, that can do an enormous amount of work, donate to Healthy Kingsport.
Yeah, very passionate about what they're doing. And it is very varied, very varied, what they are doing, all the way to vaping and those kinds of things, and just really trying to get kids making good choices for their overall health. So it was, it's very enlightening. I didn't realize how broad their scope ran, so it was very, very good meeting, enjoyed that.
They were the reason we have those water refilling stations in a lot of our schools. They're the ones that put that in.
Yes, yes. They work with David Sewell in getting the, the water bottle refill stations. It's come in very handy. A couple other things I just wanted to talk about, and that is the potential of, if you've had an opportunity to read the board update, there's a need for us to...
I didn't know if I was letting the cat out of the bag or not.
We are so excited. The dome, which was supposed to be renovated in March or April, is there ahead of schedule and we are making, plans are being made. Is that okay? Am I, am I telling something I shouldn't tell? Plans are being made to have a ribbon cutting for the dome and to allow our students in there to play basketball and, and wrestle and all the things in winter sports before they graduate. So I'm so excited and thank, thank you to everyone who's been working on that, particularly Preston Construction, countless hours that they've put into that. So that, it seems the best date for that is January 28th and there's going to be a big celebration with it. We have a work session that night scheduled and so it would be my recommendation that we move our work session to January 21st. That would be, we would have our regularly scheduled meeting on the 14th and then have our work session on the 21st. So if you all want to check your calendars and see if that would work and that would free us up to be able to go and be a part of the ribbon cutting, I think that's actually homecoming and a plethora of things are going to be going on in that dome on January 28th. So if there are no, if there's no opposition to that, then we'll go ahead and change that. And I think our communications department will get that information out so that the public will know that we will be meeting. So we will not have a work session here in December. So our next meeting will be a business meeting scheduled for January 14th and then the work session will be January 21st. There's a couple other things I want to get out in front of the board and, and I can put this in a written communication as well, but just wanted to go ahead and get them out there while I was looking at the annual calendar. There are a couple things, for example, in February, per our current calendar, we have an employee survey and superintendent self-evaluation review, et cetera, et cetera. And then in March, we would actually have a superintendent review and the contract adjustment. Well, it doesn't really make a lot of sense for us to look at his contract and goals and objectives when, and he has those, but those don't really come to fruition until the end of the school year. So it would be my recommendation that we move those items to later in the year to move the superintendent review, or excuse me, the superintendent self-evaluation and employee survey to April, to an April timeframe. And then move the superintendent review and contract adjustment to a June timeframe that would go into effect July 1. That's how his current contract is rolling. And then we could establish the 25, 26 goals and objectives in August. You know, we, that would give us time to get his contract where it needs to be and then get new goals and objectives established for him. So I think we've got his contract lined up correctly, we just don't have our review lined up correctly to it. So if, if there is no opposition to that, Dr. Hampton and I can work with Dr. True and others who, it's, it's just administrative... who, it's just an administrative procedure change. It's nothing that we really have to vote on or anything like that. And I will, that will be in our minutes, but I'll try to get that out to you all, too, just so you know. Okay, one other important meeting that is, that we will have, is on January 29th. I think that's the correct day. That's going to be our budget, our annual budget review. It's an all-day meeting. I know that's a big ask for a lot of folks, but if you can make it, all the principals and different supervisors come and make their requests, and you really learn a lot about the schools and their needs. If you're able to attend that, that's going to be on Wednesday, January 29th. I think it starts at 8:00 and usually wraps up around 4:00, 4:00 or 5:00, something like that.
Are you sure it's time for that again?
I know, budgets never stop. They never stop. It's hard to believe it's time to start that process again, but it's here.
8:00.
8:00. I'm sure Mr. Frye is saying that exact same thing, yes. And then our next meetings in February will be February 11th for our BOE meeting. We also have Legal and Legislative Institute around that timeframe, and February 25th will be our work session. Okay, that's a lot.
You sent it out in the, in the update. What was the legislative, when was the legislative?
Thursday the 9th.
January.
January.
Oh, that's right. Yes, we are hoping to have a legislative breakfast with all of our local legislators on January 9th, and that's at 8:30 to 10:00. So lots going on, but we really wanted to try to catch them before the new legislative session opens up, 8:30 to 10:00. And breakfast will be served, so probably start breakfast around 8:00. And thank you to Mary Beth for her work on the invitation that's going out. It's a beautiful invitation to our local legislators. Okay, that's a lot. Dr. Hampton?
It's a lot of celebrating, which there's, I can't think of too many better reasons to come together than to celebrate students and their teachers and principals and, you know, the moving forward with these building projects. So many good things moving in the right direction. And so thanks to everyone who's a part of that. And it's a great opportunity to say Merry Christmas to our faculty, staff, parents, community members, city leaders who are listening, who support us, who invest in us, who pray for us, who do all the things to allow us to be who and what we are. So as we wind this school year, or this calendar year, we won't be back together as a board. Would like to especially extend that thanks to each of our board members for all you do to contribute to our well-being and our success. It's wishing everyone the brightest of holidays and great blessings in 2025.
Wonderful. Any other comments? Thank you so much for your commitment. It is exciting to have this many recognitions, and I think it's the first time in our district's history that we've had the State Teacher of the Year and the State Principal of the Year at the same time, so...
It's remarkable. Quite remarkable.
It is, it is very remarkable. So my cheeks are kind of hurting from grinning so much. So I'm so proud. And if there are no other discussions, then we are adjourned. Roll tribe.